Dear applause, just thank you for bringing us all together today. And where I'm just about to take about ten to fifteen seconds for a moment aside as far as Councilman Vickers, if you don't mind. Lord, I just ask you as we go into this weekend with all of us going back to GMA to further education, to help bring back new ideas, new things that move this community forward as one community, Lord. We're also saddened by the loss of one of our great leaders, Lord, as I always call him, the Godfather, Lord. He was the one I always turned to to help me out, and he's the first one to bring me in and sit me down when I was left almost five years ago, Lord. Thank you for his leadership, I thank you for everything he's done for this community. He is gone, but he will not be forgotten. And Lord, I just thank you for the impact he made on my life and the five short years I met him. I cannot imagine he, we extending everything, I cannot imagine every person he touched and the impact he made of this area when he served. And Lord, I just thank you for everything you do for us, thank you for your arms around us, your protection. May my prayer be.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we see on the two of the events, before coming to the next meeting for approval, I have three orders and resolutions, and consideration of requests to adopt the United States Air Force authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the FAA, Mark Barber, City Manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor, for leading the council. This is an anonymous, the mayor said there's a grant that's being prepared by the FAA for the, for our airport, our original airport, and the project will be three projects that will be included in this grant. It's a commercial internal area study, a wall eye control site study, and you, as well as an airport obstruction survey. Now, the total amount of that, the total amount of those four projects is $278,163. The agenda item have before you in the amount of $257, let me get it here, of $250,47. That's the FAA's portion of the two senior, that it records ninety percent of the grant funded. And it's a little different, and sometimes they present these agendas where everybody's funding sources together, these will be two separate agendas, the latest agenda will be very, will be the same thing except for show the DMT and the airport's participation. So, as you know, we administer the grants for the airport, and so we need authority from council for Mayor Madison to sign those resolutions. On behalf of answering questions.
Counsel, any questions? For Mark.
Mr. Mayor, without objection, we have a report of the need to approve agenda items three A and agenda items three B, as such, both identical cases.
Motion in the second, is that our way to handle that? All right. Got some motion in the second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. All opposition, same. Motion carries, advantage. Thank you. That handle the G-bob on two, correct?
Yes, sir, yeah. G-bob as well as the airport, they're five percent for G-bob, five percent from the airport.
I'm going to read out the C now. Special election to fill the vacant position of the Allosa City Council. Mark Barber, you can decide.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, through my time with the city, I've presented a lot of difficult agenda items, controversial agenda items, but I believe this is the one that's going to be the focus for me in the future as well as the past. So, we're going to make it through it, and we've got to move on, and we've got to do what our charter tells us to do. So, here I'm going to, I'm going to read the charter, so, just so you know what the actual charter says about a vacant position. And that's set to three point two-two, fill in the vacant seats by our city charter. In the event the office of mayor or council member shall convene for any cause whatsoever, the mayor and council shall, within ten days after the occurrence of such vacancy, cause special election as provided by law to fill the balance of the unexpired term of the office. Provided, however, if a regular election for the office of mayor or council member is to be held within six months after such vacancy occurs, the mayor and the remaining members of the council shall, by majority, vote, appoint a qualified, vote to appoint a qualified person for the remainder of the term. So, we exceed the six months, so our charter requires that we have a call for a special election within ten days. So, that's what we'll be doing tonight by approving this agenda, we're calling for a special election. Councilman Vickers, why? The qual, it'll be, it'll be just like a regular election that we would normally do. The qualifying fee is $474. The qualifying dates for this special election will be, will be July 5th, beginning at eight a.m., and ending on July 7th at twelve p.m. So, that'll be the qualifying days for those interested in fulfillment of the rest of this term. As usual, I'm requesting that Mayor and Council permit me to negotiate with the Land Management Board of Elections, the contract, let them handle the entire election process, including county poll workers and all of those necessary things, but that's no different from a regular election. This election will be November the 8th, 2022, and if a runoff is required, that would be December the 6th, 2022. So, what amounts to for tonight is approval of a resolution to call for a special election of the city's vacant, by Councilman Vickers. On behalf of answering questions.
Got some questions for Mark about this project.
I can, I'm not sure to improve this.
Second, got a motion in the second, any further comments?
Yes. This is heartbreaking, man, to do this.
It is.
Um, you already know I didn't want to do this. I waited, well, no, I'm not going to stay in this seat until next year, do it, they mentioned next year.
Right, yes, ma'am.
But it's all the charred rules. It's hurting, but we have to go by the char, it was, it's into us, so.
Yes, ma'am. I've worked out with them, we've got some of the, you know, the beginning things worked out. We're going to try and run the ad that has to until Monday or the next week after, so it's a verb, so. I hope that helps a little bit.
Counsel, any further comments? Got a motion in the second, all in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, you know, thank you. We might have four business contracts, agreements, and expenditures, consideration of this for the placement and installation, promotional outlets in the city of Allosa, that's a sort of parking lot. This is going to be a great project, how would you?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is consideration to spell multiple power tests throughout the customer service parking lot, over by Union Park. Currently, every time we have events, we have food truck, we have a lot of, the vacuum option may allow the heat generator, sometimes it can be a dangerous, you know, so. But these items in place allow for more safety and stuff above areas. Also, as we open up, grand opening of Union Park, and we utilize this area to be different than, of events during the year, different, whether it's Christmas, New Year, Fourth of July, all of these type of events, we have opportunity to like the area. The electrical additions were approved in the FY 2023 budget, in the event, as our outline, but the project was promptly advertised in the local newspaper on the city's website. Beds were opened on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. The sold bid was received from standard contractors and then mounted $148,842, and adding a ten percent contingency brings it to $163,726. Staff recommends council approve and allow the airport to work the parking lot with this project.
Richard, ready to get it done by August Sonia?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions for Richard?
Is that a question about like the security of that, since we have, we are, I wonder if we're even about that? Will there be a kill switch, somebody won't be locked, like for children or something?
Or by a H R video? Sir? I said on the part of my H R video?
Oh, pardon me.
Yes, sir, there will be a box that we will have the capability to lock out.
Counsel, any questions? Would you thank me? Thanks, sir. Counsel, choose for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the B A, as stated with the $148,842, with a ten percent contingency.
Second, got a motion in the second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Any others? Counsel, thank you. Richard, thank you. Item C.
Request to approve an amendment, the master terms and conditions for the via, the via transit service, Richard Hardy will again present. Year two.
Yes, sir, everyone knows that the beer has been a success, the demand for the service has been overwhelming. Currently, we have more requests than we have vehicles to provide the service. So, what we looked at doing was looking at the contract, looking at amending the current contract, bringing ten more vehicles onboard, allowing us to provide more hours and more service capability to the city. Since the launch, the demand for service has exceeded the capability of the entire fleet and the contracted hours. Currently, Valdosta on demand is providing an average of three hundred rides with the upward demand of five hundred. The city was approved for the FTA 5307 grant and congressional direct expenditure to fund this transit program for FY 23. The city's map was approved in the FY 23 budget. The attached amendment outlines the duration of the contract, the effective date from July 1st, 2022, to June 30, 2023. A termination clause due to the funding, fee structure, and a chart highlighting vehicle hours, estimated rides served, fleet size, the total annual program cost. Staff recommends that council approve the contract amendment as stated.
Counsel, any questions for Richard? And that was three hundred per day with demand of upwards of five hundred per day, that's amazing.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
It's to bring the total number of vehicles to ten, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not, not adding ten more.
Ten total.
I got you. Just wanted to make sure that I was by the air, I was standing if you was paying attention.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for Richard? Richard, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to amend the contract with via for public transit.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Fantastic. Believe they're having a gathering on Saturday, are they not? We'll all be at GMA and miss out on that. But we, I sent along our well wishes and congratulations and said it was a banner day for all of us entering that second year. Thank you, Richard. Item C, consideration of an agreement for governmental affairs representation for the city of Allosa, Mark Barber will present.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the annual contract with governmental affairs. You know, as you know, they act as our governmental relations consultant, they help us find grants, they lobby for us, they've, they've done a tremendous job through the years that we've had them onboard with us, and so it's time, it's an annual contract, so we're asking for renewal of the contract, same contract amount of $4,000 per month, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Terry Coleman, Terry Matthews, Scott Maxwell, they are very effective.
They are, they're, they're, they're a lot of help for us, not just during the legislative session, but throughout the year.
Correct. Called me on my vacation. All right, Mark, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, unanimous? Hoping that mine's in order. We'll move on to item five, local funding and requests. Consideration of our request to approve the proposed community development block grant, our CDBG annual action plan for fiscal year 2022, Anitra Riley, our neighborhood development and community protection manager, will present.
Doing a super job, too.
She is killing it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I come before you for consideration of a request to approve the proposed community development block grant, annual action plan for fiscal year 2022. The city of Allosa is scheduled to receive $647,095 for the fiscal year 2022, which is $46,582 less than the fiscal years 2021. We are proposing the following activities. Program administration is $129,419. Single unit residential rehab, $431,176. Great Promise Partnership, $50,000. Back to school community outreach, $10,000. Small business, $25,000. Neighborhood Action Association, a hun, I'm sorry, $1,500, bringing the total to $647,095. The proposed activities were presented in a public hearing, June 9th of 2022, and the public comment period ends July 9th, 2022. The annual action plan is due July 13, 2022, otherwise we forfeit the money. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What's the formula for allotment? How dare they give us a dime less than they did last year?
HUD sets that formula.
I know.
(laughing).
Any other questions for Anitra? Anitra, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for, for action.
Sir, I make a motion, we're approved this request as presented by Ms. Riley.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, unanimous? Item B, consideration of our request for payment of an invoice for emergency sewer repairs near Sestella Avenue. David Frost.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Good, good, doing great, thank you. Yeah, this is back in February, February 6th, 2022, city utilities personnel responded to a report of a cave in near a manhole, Officer Stella drive along One Mile Branch. They had just some research and discovered that the concrete sewer main was collapsed, the thirty inch sewer main. They determined the best course of action was to replace the entire section of main because after their inspection, they discovered the three hundred twenty-five feet of it was in danger of collapsing as well. So, due to the critical state of the pipe and emergency condition was issued for repairs that prevented use of the formal bidding process, James Warren and associates were selected based on availability and immediate access to needed equipment and materials. Staff considered very options for replacing the main and determine, to determine the most, most feasible and quickest way with the pipe burst method. JWA submitted a quote of $617,500 for the work and completed the project on May 30th. We recommend payment to JWA for the invoiced amount of $617,500. Glad to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for David? David, stay put. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for action.
In honor of the late Councilman Sonny Vickers, I approve this request.
Second. Motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. We'll move on to item C, consideration of our request for payment of an invoice for an emergency replacement of a sewer line at the Withlacoochee wastewater treatment plant, David Frost to present again.
Yeah, back in April 12th, Central Lines responded to a call from Withlacoochee staff about a possible sewer leak there at the plant. Following investigation, they discovered a section of thirty-six inch ductile iron sewer main was on the verge of collapse. The main was, is the main influent line and soap can vanish from the plant, had worked to the treatment basins, it was pretty critical piece of pipe. A subsequent evaluation revealed deterioration along the entire section of pipe, which could have been catastrophic for the plant. Plant operators immediately diverted the flow to the six million gallon EQ basin, contacted a contractor to set up emergency bypass, and discussed a repair plan. Given its poor state, the best course of action was replace fifty-five linear feet of the cement lined sewer pipe with a more durable epoxy lined sewer pipe. Because the plant needed to return to normal operation as quickly as possible, an emergency condition was issued for the work to prevent the use of the formal bidding process. RPI underground was selected based on availability and immediate access to the needed bypass system. We completed the pipe placement on April 27th, and the plant was taken off bypass and placed back in normal operation, so it was down, well, less than two weeks. Our main work was completed May 26th. We recommend authorization and payment in the round of $259,430 and eighty-six cents to RPI for the emergency repair. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for David?
Not a question, but this is David's last council meeting, his last presentation before this council, as tomorrow is his last day, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for all you've done on behalf of the citizens in the city of Allosa.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. It's been my pleasure, it's been my pleasure. It's been, it's been an honor sharing the city, and it's been, it's been a great eight years, and seen a lot of, a lot of things taking place, and all thanks to the support of the council and the mayor, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, David, thank you.
With that, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. I got a motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Counsel, thank you. David, thank you. Move on to item six, citizens to be heard, it's the portion of the meeting that we ask you to come forward and state your name and address, so we can have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes, so that others have time to be heard. Direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate, it's our policy to immediately follow through with you and your concern after the meeting. Additionally, we ask that any groups, designate one spokesperson to represent the group in their comments, again, to ensure all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please come forward, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Gregory Williams, and I reside at 806 West Gordon Street. I am a lifelong resident of District Three, and a protege of the late, great, honorable Sonny Vickers. I stand before you today as a product of Sonny's work. I kind of want you guys to hold your head up and be proud of what Sonny has done for our city and our district. To make a long story short, I would like you guys to consider a request to change Cherry Street to Sonny Vickers Lane. Reason why, growing up in District Three, Sonny has always lived on Cherry Street, he's always had an open door policy. I can't tell you, one time I went to Sonny's house and his door was actually closed shut. I spent several nights, summers with Sonny, and I think that would be something we could do to honor his legacy for our particular district, is by changing his, that street to his name.
Gregory, you're a beautiful man, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
My name is Gracie Bacon, I live at 708 Holly Drive. Things have not improved on Holly Drive, they've gotten worse. Yesterday, I went outside to go to mailbox, and I had to go back in, because the odor in that yard was just that terrible. There wasn't burning wood, or paper, it was burning something, but you couldn't breathe out there yesterday, so I had to go back in. I see the city marshes down there, but seem like when they come, we get a truck load, move cars. We have a lot of cars down there, and a lot of people coming down there. And I don't know why the city council won't do anything, or the police won't do anything, I don't understand it. And my father always said that when a person doesn't react, he's got a reason. He's, it's race, fear, or money. It's a combination of all three. This council, he's not afraid of what you all want to do, because he gets worse every time somebody comes down there. You don't have the excuse of, I can't see behind the house anymore, you can't say, I didn't know, you say, you can't say they're having church or choir rehearsal, or missionary meeting, you can't say they're having a family reunion, because this goes on every day, and nobody ever had a family reunion every day. So, I don't know why this council won't react, it would not cost any money. I hear you all sitting here talking about thousands and thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. Some of that taxpayer are very small, and all that money is mine. I would like to see something done for my street sometime, instead of you all just sitting here not reacting. Somebody should react before it turned into three houses. It was one house, now it's three. It should have been taken care of before it spread it. It's just like a disease. Once you let it go, it's spread, it's just like cancer. And you all did not do anything to stop this cancer. And now it's taken over a whole nice street, three houses of junk cars, tractors, flatbeds ringing in cars, when I left the house just then, a flatbed out there sitting with a car. Do you all ever go down there and look and see what I'm talking about? Have you been down there and seen what I'm talking about? Then you could come back and say, well, Ms. Bacon, you lied. There is nothing down there. But do you take enough time to hear a citizen say there is something wrong? Somebody needs to do something, and I don't have any money to pay a lawyer with or a council member with. I don't have that kind of money, because I'm a retired teacher. Teachers don't make that kind of money. So, I don't have that, all I can have is truth, and I'm telling you the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Are any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? John, please state your name.
Hi there, I'm John Quarterman, I live in the county, but I get my mail at 3338 Country Club Road, Suite L, P M B 336. And I'm here as the Sonny Riverkeeper to thank the city council. First, I'd like to thank the utilities department for those two items, the Sestella Avenue and the sewer line at the wastewater treatment plant. Sestella Avenue, I don't know how those lines run, but it might even help with the problem at Wainwright Drive, that would be a good thing. Okay, so, you all may know that we actually won a state prize for trash cleanups. Now, you're making that a little harder, because on the Sestis, a trash boom that the city bought was installed on Sugar Creek, and that's the main thing I've come to thank you for. So, thank you, city council, for doing that. But, given I'm the Sonny Riverkeeper, I'm also here to remind you, we need at least two more of those, one to go in Two Mile Branch to keep the stuff out of Joe Ree Mill Pond, and one to go in Three Mile Branch, the creek that the mayor lives on, to keep it out of the river. And we need something done upstream, for example, the situation on Holly Lane, that trash, I bet some of it washes off into nearby creeks, and there's a lot more of that. Thus, the big problem, as we know, is not even that, it's trash coming off of parking lots, especially fast food trash, and the city has illnesses which can be enforced. I look forward to the city first leading by putting trash cans in its own parking lots, right across the street here, and that would encourage businesses to voluntarily do that and keep trash on their land, and if they don't, then the city can find them. if they don't, then the city can find them. So, um, and as far as responding, there's still, uh, items in Click and Fix that are not responded to, it'd be really good if they were responded. So, uh, those are all the things you already know, I'm just here to remind you and to thank you once again, especially Council Gibbs, who came down and actually saw the situation, and he and the mayor, who've come down and actually helped sell some stuff out of the river. If y'all got a chance, so, and just maybe not, uh, no alligators this time, sorry, uh, Council, Mr. Cody. But if you come down to Treatville Boat Ramp this Saturday, we'll be floating down the river and then back up to Woodlacucci to change saw some dead cars out of the river to make it easier for people to paddle from, um, Langby Park Boat Ramp down to Treatville Boat Ramp. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mark Barber?
I'm good, just sitting there.
Thank you. Council comments? Council, any, any added comments tonight?
Be safe if you're going to G M A.
Yeah, true.
Well, you know, I always do. Uh, to everyone, the Harrington's Funeral Home is, uh, that's where Councilman Vickers' body is laid at, at this time. Also, his funeral will be Sunday at Woodland Church of Christ on Barack Obama. The pastor is Leroy Butler. We are asking that you respect the family because the church is only so big, but you can go to Harrington's screen, his number is two four two twenty-eight twenty-eight. The family is asking for not to bring flowers, but to give a donation to a council foundation, which we are starting in honor of Councilman Sonny Joseph Vickers. Again, we ask that you respect the family with prayers and the city councilman with prayers. This has been one of the tremendous challenges for us and myself. I want to personally thank our mayor, our city manager, Ms. Teresa, and the council for bearing with me because I have been, I know, very aggressive this week with assisting the Vickers' family with trying to make this one of the greatest, hmm, one of the greatest... I love him. I love him hard, and I'm asking you all to please, let's make this foundation be a success for Councilman Sonny Vickers, who has been the pillow of the city of Valdosta for excellent of years. And again, we say thank you for supporting the Vickers' family.
Miss Cudi, thank you, and thank you for your leadership through all this as well. Just a, a quick, a quick addition, um, the proclamation that has come down from the state, from the governor of our fine state, is going to honor Sonny by flying the flags of our state at half mast on Sunday.
Let's stand on that, everyone. That's a, that's an honor.